Okay, we're going to call this special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. January 26th to order. I apologize for the 15 minute delay. Our Zoom is having issues and it turns out it's a national update to Zoom. So nice to know it's not our equipment, but it couldn't be resolved in the 15 minutes we were hoping. So we're going to proceed in kind of this different way. So the board members and anybody else speaking in the room will speak loudly to be heard through the speaker on my laptop. And we just have two items to move through. So to start our meeting Supervisor Gogan is going to lead us in the pledge. All right, consent calendar. These items, this item includes a non-routine, non-controversial matter and will be acted upon the board in just this one walk of motion. If a one-row call motion, if a member of the public has any questions or comments on this item, you may provide that now. And a member of the board or staff may ask to consider this item in more depth. So is there any public comment on the consent calendar item? Let me see that for myself. All right. Okay, do board members have any questions of the sheriff?
I just have a question as to when we can anticipate completion of the project and return of normal emergency broadcast.
I'm sorry, Tim Sachs and Sheriff, I didn't hear the question.
He would like, Supervisor Lutwiler would like to know when we can anticipate completion of this project and return of normal emergency communication.
I wish I could look into crystal ball Supervisor and give you an exact date. As soon as we have the approval from the board on continuing forward with the contract amendment, we will move forward with Frontier. I'm told this is not going to be a significant project. It should be fairly quickly, but I don't have an exact timeline for you. It should be fairly quickly.
I would say for myself, if we could have updates as the project proceeds, that would be appreciated.
Hopefully I'll have some good news for you by the next board meeting.
Okay, nice. Thank you. Hey, there's a motion to approve from Supervisor Fraser.
I will second.
Supervisor Gogan seconds. Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
All right, county matters. This item include this item in, these items include non-routine or controversial matters. I apologize and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. We have one item. HR, item 2.1, appoint Elizabeth Hamilton as interim county administrative officer effective January 26, 2023. Approxima cost in salary and benefits per month for halftime FTE as an interim CIO at A Step is $11,152. There is no impact to the general fund. And CEO Garza, interim CEO Garza is going to speak to this item. I'll let her have my chair.
Good morning, Board. It is with great pleasure. I'm here with you today to present this item to you. Due to the fact that as the interim CIO, I was limited to 960 hours as a retired annuitant. And I am approaching that amount this week. So that was the reason for this special board meeting. It is with great pleasure that I'd like to recommend to you Liz Hamilton, who is currently our HHS Director over OES as well. And recommend to you that she fill in the role as interim CIO. I do indicate in the staff report and I did share with you by email this morning, the updated salary schedule. Because after Director Hamilton and I met yesterday afternoon, it came into our conversation that since my position has been having to fill in for the HR Director position, that that is an additional workload that I, I do agree needs to be compensated with an additional 5%. So that 5% would put her in the B step for this range that you know, I have before you in the staff report. So I would really appreciate the board consider and approve Liz coming in at the B step versus the A step that was requested originally in the staff report. Liz definitely has the experience and background in all county operations. It was my pleasure to work with her when I was the HHS Director as she was my deputy director. She is well versed in all areas of county government. Like I said, operations, I think it will be an easy transition for her to kind of fill in. And I will do my best to assist her in any questions or issues that may come up. So with that, I do also want to mention, we do mention the 50%. And I think Liz will kind of touch on that as far as what she would like to propose and request a little flexibility because again, you know, there's different things that happen within the position and her position that there could be some variances in that percentage, whether it's daily or weekly. So I would encourage her to work with Suzy Hawkins and ensuring that we just stay within our, our budget. I would encourage her to work with Suzy Hawkins and ensuring that we just stay within our, our budget for this fiscal year and I'll pass it over to Liz to kind of talk about that if she like. Or is that okay or?
No, you're not. A suggestion would be that one of these other laptops in the room could log into this meeting and you can. Yep, thank you. I think you took my papers.
I think we're ready. First, I would like to extend a thank you on behalf of department heads and county staff for the job that Letty has done in the last eight months. She has done well above and beyond for the county during that time. So thank you. And we were able to meet yesterday and just her onboarding of me just what a valuable, what a valuable gift to actually have someone pass the torch properly. And so thank you, Letty for that. So there are probably two things. I'll start with the first that I'm concerned about. Well, I will say a big thank you. I'm able to say yes to this interim appointment because my team is saying yes to me. And they're willing to step up and help with Health and Human Services and Office of Emergency Operations in the times that I'm not there. So I appreciate my management team and I know you, you do as well. I plan to track hours. You know, there are things within Health and Human Services that are mandatory for me to continue with, and that would be my intention to stay looped in with those items. And I think in watching Letty over the last eight months, it's obvious that 20 hours a week isn't always sufficient, but I imagine that there's an ebb and flow. You know, my intention is to help keep county operations moving forward. And knowing that we have a CIO that is coming on board in April and then supporting staff. So those would be my two primary goals. And I think that there are further conversations that I will have to have with our fiscal team and then Suzy Hawkins on probably my salary being paid as normal through how we do that for our claiming purposes. And then asking the county to reimburse for time that I spend when I'm at the CAO's office doing that work. So that's my initial recommendation, but I really need time with Suzy to go through the, the details of that. The second area that I just want to highlight and bring to your attention is I did reach out to CalPERS to talk about my retirement benefits by reducing my primary role to 50%. I want to confirm that I am not putting myself inadvertently into only earning halftime retirement credit for the next four months and losing out on that. So they needed to send me to someone up higher to talk to. And so I have an appointment Monday morning and I'll know more and I can bring that back to the board. If there's any adverse like impact to my retirement in doing this. It could be that my ask goal will be to come back and ask for an offset that I can put into my 457 so that I'm not losing out on my retirement completely during that time. So I throw that out there as information, just being transparent, but I will let you know the status. If there's no impact, then I'll let you know that as well.
Okay, good. Thank you. Questions of board members? All right, hearing none, we will open this up for public comment.
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Close public comment, bring it back to the board. Is there any discussion or I would entertain a motion? You'll, you'll have to come over here or you can go down and use. Sure.
I just want to say I just want to say thank you to Letty because I know it's been a run, a dead run actually for just since I've been engaged with you and your professionalism has been outstanding. And I just want to say thank you to Liz for being willing to do this. I know that, and I hope that you remember that first and foremost, you're a mom. And that you take time to be that because we will benefit when you're the healthiest and the best and so will everyone else. So thank you for your willingness to do this. I know it's going to be a dead run for you. So just be sure to let us know where we can help you when it's appropriate.
Thank you. All right, with that, I would like a motion if I could.
I note that we approved as presented the appointment of Elizabeth Hamilton as interim CIO. At step B.
Second.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion from Supervisor Lutwiler, a second, or Supervisor Gogan. And before Ashley does pull the board, I would like to also just tell Letty how I don't think I can do it with a straight face. There are not words to express my gratitude to you. And I will leave it at that. Liz, thank you as well.
I would like to thank Liz. She's been fantastic. I cannot say enough about stepping up to the job she did, taking it on, fed on. As transparent as she's been, as hard as it's been, she's risen to the occasion and I I don't have the words to thank her enough. That was the time. It's, she's been amazing. I've learned a lot. And I go reverend debt to what you've done for us. It's been fantastic. And thank you very much. And Liz, thank you for stepping up. This is, this is huge and I think it's transitional, go smooth. And what can I say? Thank you.
It's also just really beautiful to note that your hard work in HSJS created the link that we have. And so it's been work over many, many years, not just the last nine months. So such a, such a tribute to your efforts and your diligence commitment to the county. So thank you for that. All right. Ashley, would you pull the board?
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
All right, with that, we are going to go into closed session. Item 3.1 Government Code Section 54954.5E Public Employee Evaluation County Administrative Officer. Do we have any public comment on our closed session item?
I have no raised hands, no chimes.
All right, with that, we will adjourn this special meeting.